Affordable housing ordinances.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, somehow I doubt it. Absolutely turn them down.
Or 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 accept any revisions.
Oh, that's interesting.
Well, yeah, because if they had the if their revisions were anything substantive, they'd have to reintroduce.
Oh.
And they might miss the judge's hearing on August 12th.
Let's see.
It's a way to plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
First, we got urban sprawl, now we're getting suburban sprawl. First, we got suburban sprawl, now we're getting urban intensive density.
Yeah, those densities, the densities are a little high.
Well.
Yeah, I know, it's I guess it's all an eye to behold, you know?
Well, they, yes, that is true. And the other, the other
The neighbors.
The other people have their have their reasons, meaning the other council people. There's the people driving this, and then there's the people that are going along with it.
Yeah.
Hey, Steve?
Yes. Yeah.
What we need, what we need on the Franklin Maple site is architect types to speak up about about lessening the zoning. I mean, lessening the density and the heights of the building. To my surprise, no, I just didn't know, but Ron Berlin spoke Monday night.
Okay.
And he spoke about, you know, good design and transitional design and, you know, how the site is supposed to be a transitional site, not have higher density than that long day. And he, he had some good planning and, you know, comments. He's definitely against the up to 160 units.
I thought, I understand, I understand that Bob Hillier is working on a building for that site.
Who is?
Bob Hillier.
Well, he had a concept plan he submitted at at Princeton Futures months ago, and he probably is working on a new one. I think his original concept plan was only for 100 units. And so it had a fair amount of open space and whatnot.
Sure, 160 is a little intensive.
Yeah. And and people are driving for that point, so he's probably worked on something in between. But they're they're going to RFP for a design professional to come up with a number of scenarios.
Oh, good. And then they'll, will that be vetted somehow? I mean, will the designs be
Yeah.
Good.
I believe so. We're, we're trying to get neighbors to have a seat at the table.
Good. Good.
But we'll see.
Good.
But, hey, I want to reach out to a couple of people asking to write letters to the editor about this, you know? Yeah, the ordinance said up to 80% impermeable coverage on Franklin.
That's a little crazy.
Yeah. And no citizen, and and in the the loose ordinance that was passed, no mandated open space for passive use.
None?
Yeah, it, none's mandated. There may be down the road and discussions as they plan out the site and get different options that don't, don't be so, but the ordinance doesn't ask for any.
Hmm, that's, that's very strange.
It's, yeah.
Well, do we have a quorum yet?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
That's right.
Let's, are we ready to start?
For Claudia.
Claudia?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Bernie, Bernie, are you there? Ah, there you are. Okay. All right. Let's begin. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on July 29, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy, copy with the Clerk of Princeton on July 17, 2020, and has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.gov. The zoning tab, yes. Choose the zoning tab to view the notice. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, regular and special meetings of the Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of the same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. So. Claudia, do you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Ms. Coulson?
Present.
Mr. Davich?
Who?
I'm here, sorry, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber? Mr. Tanner?
Here.
Mr.?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Okay. We have three resolutions of fact, findings of fact to go through before we start on the new applications. For some reason, I just misplaced my, my agenda, but the first one is 7 Spring Street. Carries a file number Z 2020-815. It's block 2701, lot 9, in the QC-9C and C-9. So, has everybody had an opportunity to review it? And if so, are there any corrections or changes?
I, I actually, this is Eve Coulson, and I saw a typo on page 3.
Okay.
In number 7, towards the end of that big, long paragraph.
Right.
Does which facility, office space, which facilities? Hmm, maybe that's a mistake, too. Small and it should be startup businesses. I mean,
Okay. Okay.
I actually wonder about the word which facilities. I'm not sure that that's the right word there, but.
Facilitates.
Facilities for. Might be facilities for.
Or facilitates.
I think facilitates would be better.
Okay. Oh, okay, I got it, okay.
If the rest of the sentence stands, you know.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, Michael, but.
Yeah, maybe that didn't. Doesn't matter.
Any other comments? If not, if somebody'd like to make a motion?
I'm of approval, Michael Floyd.
Second?
I'll second, Jim Davich.
Okay.
Mr. Davich, you went out of that meeting, I'm sorry.
Who was it?
He was.
Okay. Oh, it was.
I'll second it, Nick Valvannes.
I hear you, Mark is absent on the. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson? Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd? Mr. Floyd?
Who?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Valvannes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next next resolution is file number Z 1919-802 495 Ewing Street, block 7, 202, lot 1. Comments, corrections, motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who's second?
Valvannes seconded Floyd moved.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Valvannes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The third and last resolution is file number 2020-820 MS 470 Quaker Road, lot 10, 301, lot 16.
Board members, we circulated a revised version which made a change to the last page, page 6. Condition of approval number 1. So does everyone, did everybody receive that? It was, the revised version was circulated by email?
I received it.
I received it.
Yeah, okay, great. Then that that's the version then that you'll be voting on tonight.
Comments, corrections, motions?
I'm of approval, Michael Floyd.
Jim Davich will second that.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber? I'm sorry. Mr. Valvannes?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two applications this evening. The first one is I don't have the file number here. Claudia, I don't have the file number for this first one. I don't have my agenda here. But it's 114 Elm Road, block 9.01, lot 4 in the C1 zone. Derek, would you like to review your manual?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, we will swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
And I can confirm that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Thanks. The applicant, applicants, Intuition Partners LLC, the owners of 114 Elm Road, they are seeking a C1 variance to remit the construction of dormers, AC condenser, and a roof overhang and accept into the required front yard setback. The property is located in the R1 zone and it's subject to the use and bulk regulations in accordance with Section 178227 and 231. The existing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bridger, this is court reporter. You keep breaking up. I, I can't quite follow everything that you're saying.
Sure, sorry about that.
Because it keeps breaking up.
Okay. Properties located in the R1 zone is subject to the use of regulations of Sections 178227 and 231, subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. The property is not complying with respect to the prevailing front yard setback, which is 55.7 feet, and the existing is 22.7. The applicant is seeking to add two second floor dormers and extend a roof, roof overhang and exception to the required prevailing front yard setback. The applicant owns the adjoining lot at 102 Elm. The subject lot contained a house of which was, it was demolished except for the existing two car garage with living quarters on the second floor. Rep proposed development plan proposes to convert one bay of the two car garage on the first floor to living room kitchen area, and the two dormers are posed on the second floor. The existing bath and bedroom in that area will redesign, new air conditioner is proposed. The front overhang of the gable roof will be extended nine inches into the front yard setback. The following variances are required. As I said earlier, the required set, front yard setback is 55.7 feet. The roof overhang will be at 21.95 feet. The AC condenser will be at 36 feet. And the front dormer will be at 28.3 feet. And the rear dormer will be at 40.9 feet. The applicant has suggested consideration under the C1 variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address it. Thank you.
Okay. Um. The app, I assume the applicant is here and ready to present?
We don't have the attorney. It's Tom Letizia. Claudia, I think you need a lot of bin.
I see him here. I see his, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Tom.
Hi, good evening. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. So if you're ready to hear our application, I'll begin. For the record, Tom Letizia, attorney with Troutman Pepper, representing Intuition Partners LLC. It is a real pleasure to be seeing everyone in this virtual setting. I hope you and your families have been safe and healthy during these past several months. I believe I heard Ms. Casey confirm that the notice of this hearing complies with law and therefore this board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. With me this evening are Jeffrey and Lisa Buks, who are the owners of the subject property, as well as architect Mark Brahaney of Lasley Brahaney Architecture and Construction. I hope they are on. I don't see a window for them.
I see, yeah, there's several people here. I see Mark.
It says B, but I'm not sure what the last name is.
Which one?
Lisa B.
Brahaney?
I don't know, it just says the initial B.
Lisa B. Lisa B is, Lisa Buks, that's the owner. Yes.
Can you see her? I don't, she's not on. I mean, she's allowed as a witness, but she's not, her microphone is so far, so is her camera.
What about Mark Brahaney?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, Mark. Okay. All right, well, we'll, we can start. This is an application. Okay.
Would you like to swear your witnesses in now, or?
We can swear in, there they are. Okay. Yes, you can do that, Ms. Casey.
Okay, so we have Jeffrey and Lisa Buks and Mark Brahaney. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, if you could all raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an application seeking a C or bulk variance approval to allow the owners to construct second floor dormers on their existing single family home located at 114 Elm Road and designated as block 9.01, lot 4 on the tax map. The property is within the R1 zone and Mr. and Mrs. Buks also own the adjoining lot at 102 Elm Road. The home is an existing nonconforming structure in that nearly 90% of it lies within the prevailing front yard setback of 55.7 feet for the lot. The home is setback 22.7 feet from Elm Road. This existing condition imposes a hardship resulting in the need for variance relief anytime outside building improvements are planned. The prevailing front yard setback is greater than the 35 foot front yard setback that is generally applicable in the zone. The house was once an attached garage with living quarters, a bedroom and bath, and part of a larger home dating back to the 1920s that was demolished. Mr. and Mrs. Buks would like to perform renovations to the home to improve its aesthetic appearance and provide more light and air into the second floor of the home where the bedroom and bath are located. The improvements being proposed which require variance relief are as follows. As I noted, two second floor dormers with the front one setback 28.3 feet and the rear dormer setback 40.9 feet. Extension of the front overhang of the gable roof by nine inches resulting in a setback of 21.95 feet. And then finally, a new air conditioning condenser unit to replace a wall mounted unit. And this condenser will be setback 36 feet from Elm Road. I note that with the exception of the roof overhang, again, a nine inch extension, all of these improvements are setback a greater distance from the road than the existing home. So with that, I'd like to call Mark Brahaney.
Thanks, Tom.
You've been previously sworn. Could you briefly give your qualifications to the board?
Sure, I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and several other states. I'm also a general contractor in New Jersey and in a few other states. I'm a licensed planner as well and have been practicing architecture and doing construction for several decades.
I, I think, Mark, we will accept you as an expert in your field.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
So, Mark, I think you have some exhibits you want to display. So you'll, can Mark just go ahead and share his screen, or does he need permission to do that?
I have exhibits. Can I just, I'll click share screen and see if this works?
Claudia has to let you.
No, somebody has to enable me to do that.
Yes. Right.
Can you try now?
What's that?
You could try now, Mark, she said.
You can try now. Okay, sorry. There we go. So, you guys?
I don't, I don't see anything.
No.
You don't see it? All right, hold on. All right, let me try this again. Somehow I'm not able to get it up.
Well, are these, the exhibits you want to show, are they part of the application?
They are, they are part of the application, yes.
There we go.
There it is. There we go. Okay. Sorry about that glitch.
So, Mark, please describe or identify this first exhibit so we can mark it for the record, please.
So this is the site plan. I guess we'll call it Exhibit A1.
And it's part of the plan set that was
Correct.
in application, correct?
And I'm assuming you can see my cursor moving around on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. So this drawing shows the 114 Elm Road property and the adjacent 101 Elm Road, 102 Elm Road.
102.
At 114 Elm Road, there had been a larger home on the property, and that was demolished, leaving this structure here. It had been an attached garage with living space above it. It was a two car garage. You can see next to this property is the, the, the house in the adjacent property, and it is, it's access to this property is through 114 Elm via this, this driveway. So I will now try to scroll. I've jumped backwards so that you can see what the, what the property looked like with its main house. I'll enlarge this a little bit.
You, well, Mark, it's, can you identify the exhibit, please?
Sure, Exhibit A2, it's, it's another version of the site plan. This shows what was originally on the property.
Just to correct the record, this is actually a survey of the property prepared in 2018. It looks like it's May, May 8, 2018.
That's right. So it shows you what was the original main house, and then this little section is the attached garage with living space above that still remains. This is a blow up of part of the site plan. And I guess we'll call it A3.
And can I just ask, is this, is this two separate lots, or is this one lot? Has this been consolidated, or is it assumed by virtue of the fact that one owner has it, it's one lot?
It's two lots. It has been two lots. It is still legally two lots, and it's not being consolidated.
Okay, thank you.
This drawing is meant to illustrate the setbacks and the variances that Tom described in his presentation. There's this this pink line is the 35 foot setback line. This pink line is the 55.7 foot prevailing setback line. All of the yellow elements are things that we are adding, we would like to add that do not comply with the 55.7 foot prevailing setback line. So at the closest to Elm Road, you can see this very slight, thin yellow line. That's the nine inch overhang that we're proposing to project off the existing roof line toward Elm Road. Then comes the, the first of two dormers that will let light and air into the bedroom space on the second floor. Next to it, a little farther off of Elm Road, is the second of the dormers doing the same thing. Then, on the rear, where the, the, the other long side of the, of the building is a new air conditioning unit. is a new air conditioning unit. It does sit outs, you know, outside the 35 foot setback line. But as you can see, it's not, it's well shy of the 55.7 prevailing setback line. The reason for placing this AC unit here is that inside, the, the building has no basement. So right inside the building at this point is the small utility room that will have the, the air handler that needs to connect to the AC unit. If we place the AC unit elsewhere, we would have to run underground lines, electrical lines and filler lines to connect the AC unit to the interior air handling unit. And then last, I don't know if Tom mentioned this, but there is a new front stoop overhang that we're proposing. And part of that, as you can see, sits in the, encroaches into the 55.7 foot prevailing setback line.
Well, Mark.
Yeah.
What is the setback dimension to that new entrance overhang?
I don't have it handy right here. It's probably about 50, 53 feet, 52 feet.
Okay.
So my next drawing is a view showing the properties within 200 feet of our property.
And we'll mark this A4, I believe.
Four, yeah. Next, I'll, I'll show you this A5. These are the floor plan drawings and interior and exterior elevation drawings. You can see the, the bottom plan is the first floor plan. You can see the foyer and stair hall. You can also see this space, which was one car bay, is being converted to kitchen and living space. And then you can see here, the other carving, car bay is being preserved as, as a, as a garage. On the second floor, you can see the stairs coming up. And we have some closets and then a bedroom space. Two new dormers are here and here. And then a, a remodeled bathroom on the top floor. And these are the exterior elevations. I guess, what are we up to A6?
Yes.
This is the elevation that shows you the two new dormers and the roof overhang at the front door, which partially encroaches into the 55.7 foot prevailing setback. You can make out a little bit of a roof overhang here that is projecting toward Elm Road that also is into the prevailing front yard setback. I don't think I'll, I don't have any comments about the other elevation. Well, this is the elevation that faces Elm Road. So you can see this rake fascia is the one that we're projecting toward Elm Road. Back from that, in the distance, you can see this, this new dormer on the right. And then there's the roof overhang at the entry. So my next drawing is a picture so that you can see what the view looks like from Elm Road. Mostly what you see in this picture is, well, you see a masonry wall at the property edge. And then beyond that, of course, you can see our building. And it is almost all roof. Very plain, very ordinary, not terribly exciting.
This is A7, right?
This is A7, yeah. I have another picture. It'll, we'll call A8. And this is the elevation we were just looking at, where the new dormers are, are placed in this roof. And there's a new overhang at this, this front, front door. And then finally, we have a rendering, rendering, the color rendering that shows what this will look like when, assuming we get permission to proceed and we go ahead and build, build the improvements that we've talked about. So again, nine inch roof overhang at this end of the building, two new dormers here. And you can just make out the new shed roof that is protection at the, at the front door. And that's it for the drawings that we have.
And, and Mark, maybe to conclude, you can just summarize some of the reasons in support of the variance and you know, what are the benefits that you see arising from?
So I think there are benefits both in terms of the interior space, and there are benefits in terms of the exterior appearance of the building. I'll talk about the exterior first. Once, once this building was sort of detached from its anchor main home, it, it really took on the quality of being a, a much more intimate cottage. And so our improvements are designed to play on that start point and take what is, what is really a very boring little structure and tune it up so that it looks significantly better from the street. And then it's, those improvements are meant to dovetail with making the interior of the, of the, of the building, this, this interior spaces much more enjoyable to live in. So we're bringing a lot of natural light and fresh air into, especially into the bedroom above. We are providing shelter at the front door so that when you're fumbling your, your keys or your guests are waiting to be let in, there is, and it's raining or snowing, there's, there's shelter there. Collectively, we think these are all great enhancements. They are modest enhancements. We're not changing the footprint of the building. We're looking to, as I said, maintain its much more intimate character. But give it improvements that are both visual and functional.
Thank you, Mr. Brahaney. Mr. Chairman, that completes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Okay. Um, well, I think, are there any questions from the board members? Okay.
Do you want me to stop sharing or keep the images up?
Yeah, you can probably, you can probably take it down.
Okay.
I've, Claudia, are there any members from the public that want to speak? Claudia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. There is no one, no one trying to speak.
Okay. Hearing no one speak, we'll close the public portion. And I guess, Mr. Letizia, do you want to say anything before we go into executive session?
No, other than I think this, we have demonstrated that this application meets the applicable legal criteria for the grant of a, of a C variance, both on the grounds of hardship given the existing nonconformity of the structure. And secondly, the planning benefits that result from the grant of the setback variances for these improvements in terms of providing light and air into a cottage and providing shelter for those who would be entering. And also to upgrade the, the air conditioning facilities at the, the home. That's also a positive. And we think there are really no negatives. So the positives outweigh the, the detriments, in our opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members, would you like to comment on this?
I have a question. It's essentially to the history of this. And that is, I assume if you had kept the main house, there would be very little need for any variance. Is that correct?
What was the question?
Yeah. You kept the main house and not, you know, gone to this garage apartment style. The main house being set back a whole lot more would have been minimized the need for any variance. Is that correct?
The main house has been demolished. It's not there anymore.
The main house was torn down a while ago.
That's right.
Okay.
Anyone else like to comment?
I'd like to say, I, I walk by that property every day. And I think the, the improvements you propose will visually enhance the, the existing garage. I think the, the wall that separates the garage from the street provides enough of a barrier that the fact that it doesn't meet the prevailing setback is truly minimized. And the, obviously, the air conditioning, condensing unit won't, no one will see that. I mean, that's, so I think it's a nicely done conversion. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I just want to say, I, I agree with Steve. I think it, it breaks up that roof, the look of the roof. And since it is a legally illegal, you know, with the, you know, it's a legal, it's a legal structure. It meets C1. And I'll move approval for C, under C1.
Do we have a second?
James Dowdell, second.
Okay. No comments on the motion? Any comments? If not, Claudia, can you call a roll?
It's your call.
Yes.
He's calling?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Babanis?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next case. Again, I don't have the case number because I misplaced my, it's here in my papers somewhere, but I can't find it. But this is 66 to 68 Wiggins Street, block 28.03, lot 52 in the R4 zone. Derek, would you like to review your memo?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I, board members.
I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem. Noticing is in order, board has jurisdiction.
Good, thank you.
The owners are Susan Bessel and the estate of Michael Bitterley, the owners of 68 six dash 68 Wiggins. They're seeking C1 and C2 variance relief to permit the construction of a parking area and exception to the required driveway width at the property line and the maximum permitted impervious coverage. Subjects located in the R4 zone is subject to the use of bulk regulations in accordance with Section 17A 254 and 258. The existing two family use is illegal conforming use. Subject lot complies with the applicable bulk regulations. However, the, the property itself is not complying with regard to the 60 foot lot width, the existing's 50 feet. It's not complying with respect to the smaller eight foot side yard setback, the existing 7.8 feet. It's not complying with respect to the 25 foot combined side yard setback, the existing 17.42 feet. And it does not comply with the three to one height to setback ratio. It's also not complying with the impervious coverage limit of 49 and a half. The existence is this, existing is 50.5. The applicant is proposing to construct a paper parking area for four cars in the rear yard. The proposed parking area will require the following variances. The proposed impervious coverage of 62% exceeds the maximum allowable 49.5. And the max, maximum driveway width proposed is 14 at the property line where the maximum permitted is 10. Leave side relief under both the C1 and the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant here and ready to present?
Yes, Steve, Bob Casey here on behalf of the applicant Susan Bessel and Zissis Papas, who are the applicants and owners through their condo of 66 dash 68 Wiggins. And I think with how well the last application went, we should just vote right now. What do you guys say?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Go for it, right?
So, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board, for the opportunity this evening. As I said, my name is Bob Casey. I'm here on behalf of, of the applicants. And as Derek said, he's spot on, as usual. There are some preexisting nonconformities with the lot. We're here this evening concerning a parking area in the back of a lot. And we're requesting an impervious coverage variance as well as a maximum driveway width variance, as Derek stated. I have with me tonight to testify two individuals. I have Susan Bessel, who is one of the owners slash applicants, as well as my professional engineer, Jeffrey Brown, from Princeton Junction Engineering. So at this point, I would just like to ask Ms. Bessel a couple of questions, if you would like to swear her in, Ms. Casey.
I will. Ms. Bessel, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan, how are you?
I'm great, Bob. How are you?
It's nice to see you. So we're here this evening, obviously, for a variance for parking in the back of your property, which includes expanding upon the impervious coverage as well as widening the driveway mouth, essentially, that would allow you into the parking area. If you could, for informational purposes for the board, could you just give a brief history as to, you're the owner, correct? And, and tell me a little bit about the lot development since the time that you purchased the property. Was there maybe before? What's there now? And what the plan is? And, and why we have the plan?
Sure. I moved in, in 2018, actually from two blocks away in Park Place. When I moved in, it was purchased from the builder at the time. And it was a backyard strip of grass and then gravel, which was described as a parking area. I got a crash course in what impervious versus pervious coverage was last summer when we started meeting with the township when I realized that we inherited a, a problem, that the compacted gravel that the builder put there was not allowed. So we began the process last summer to fix what we inherited. So we want to, our backyard, I'm sorry, I'm a math teacher. I'm trying to draw you a slope of the, our backyard is, was at a slope. And there used to be a garage back there. And that was blocking the entrance to the easement. So the cars would just park there. When the builder took away the garage, there was just a slope and which could cause water runoff from our yard down into the easement. So what we wanted to do, not just for our own, for me to have safe parking for me and my daughter, but to make it better for our neighbors, make it better for our own parking for the community, level our backyard and then take out the impervious gravel and put impervious pavers. So we've been working, we met with the township a few times last summer. Basically, we just want to do the job well and correct to make the situation better. We contacted our neighbors, got their input on what they would want. We met with and hired an engineer last summer, who has since retired, Bob Fisk. So we have our new engineer here tonight, just to give us the parking. So, and the other issue, when we met with Derek and Jack last summer, is the ability to not just have one strip, but be able to turn our cars around because we're at the end of the easement. So for safety and not have to reverse all the way back through the easement because there's children and everything else back there, have enough space to park our cars and turn around and get out safely while mitigating any potential flooding or water issues. So.
But are, what are those water issues that you speak of?
Um, I honestly, I have only, that's because I've only been there for two years. I mean, I, I grew up in Princeton, so I'm familiar with when there's heavy, heavy rain, depending on where your house is, the water can be bad in certain situations. When I was on Park Place, I was on the top of the street. The bottom of the street got flooded, the top of the street was fine. But just talking to our neighbors on certain storms, there would be in the easement, the way the road. Um, but just talking to our neighbors on certain storms, there'd be in the easement, the way the road is, there's little puddles and a little bit of flooding. Nothing that you can't drive your car through, but we want to get rid of and do our best to, in order to alleviate any potential issues. Um, and do help alleviate whatever is currently happening. I don't know if it happened before we got there, when the garage was there, um, or whether it started with, with us. But the easement is a small gravel road that's a little bit lower than anyone's property anyway. So, um, just trying to take the steps we can in order to not have a runoff with a slope down. So we've already leveled our backyard and I think that's actually helped tremendously since last summer storms to the summer storms. And now just get rid of the impacted gravel and put down pervious pavers to provide more drainage area in our yard so it doesn't go into the easement.
So you don't have a traditional driveway along the side of your house, right? Your only ingress and egress for parking purposes is from the, the alley, we'll call it, correct?
You have to go through the alley. Um, I'm a single mom with an eight-month-old. So for me to have parking in, I think that's where, when I was meeting the township, I'm like, I don't know which one I'm applying for in terms of hardships. I can't park on the street with an eight-month-old and walk through the streets of Princeton. It's just not safe. So the only way for us to do that is accessing through the easement and into our backyard area, where it used to be a garage, but now it's just gravel. So that's where we're currently parking.
Okay. And the idea essentially is to get rid of the gravel and put down the pervious pavers, which will increase, according to the, the Princeton Land Use Ordinance, will increase the impervious coverage. Yeah, will be with pervious, uh, E.P. Henry pavers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. I have no further questions for Ms. Bessel. If any of the Board members do, please go ahead.
Let's turn.
I don't. Any Board members have any questions?
I just have one question. Um, on the plans, it, behind the building, it looks as, as two proposed 15-by-15 patios.
Yes, we put a permit in for that last summer. Um, the patios, the, the plans, um, when we bought the house, there was the grass and a huge amount of gravel. If we looked at what it was from the previous owners before the builders, um, there were two stone patios, walkways, and then the garage. So we wanted just to put two small patios down. And that's when we started to uncover that the gravel is not right. So we applied for a permit last September, I believe, and was approved when the, um, two patios are, um, built.
Okay, so those are no longer, they're not proposed, they're, they're completed?
They are completed, yes.
So they're not adding to the impervious? They've already been equated, they've already been calculated into this? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I, I have a question about the, uh, drawings. There's a pre-existing conditions and a proposed, but there's not actually a drawing that shows what's there now, right? Because the one that's showing the block garage, that one, it, that's, that's already not existing. Is that correct?
So I'm gonna have.
Correct. The, the garage is gone. So the, so the pre-existing on the left. And, and Jeff Brown can speak to this momentarily, but the pre-existing on the left has dashed lines that show what it was, right? Where the, where the old patios were and where the box garage was. Correct. That's just, I don't know if I clarified that for you, but yes, those are, those are.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question. Here's a question in the Q and A. Am I supposed to answer that out loud? I'm a teacher. I'm just trying to figure, I, I follow the Q and A boxes.
I think you should probably, you should probably wait to, to do that, Suzy.
All right, let me take my phone off.
Okay. Any other questions of the Board members for Susie, for Susan, I should say?
I don't have any. Any Board members have any questions? Nope. Carry on.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. I call, um, Jeffrey Brown to testify, please.
Mr. Brown, we'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I did.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Brown. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you.
Good. If you could, um, for a moment, just explain to the Board your qualifications to testify this evening as an expert.
Okay, I'm a licensed professional engineer, uh, in New Jersey, have been so for 43 years. I'm also a licensed professional land surveyor and a licensed professional planner. I have a degree in, uh, civil engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, and I'm the president of Princeton Junction Engineering.
Okay. I think we'll accept you as the expert in your field.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Brown, are you familiar with the site that's in question this evening? Have you visited it?
Yes, I am.
When was the last time you visited the site?
Um, yesterday.
Okay, if you could, um, please describe for me and for the Board, um, and the public, the, the plan. Um, and if you'd like, I can probably share my screen to put it up if that'll be helpful for everyone.
Right, that would be good.
So. Let me see if I can figure it out. All right, hold on here. Is that it?
And that's, that's just your, uh, file, but there's no, no image.
All right.
Maybe if you open that file up, it'll work.
Says that it was. Hold on. Try again.
There you go.
All right. So I'd like to, to mark this as A1. Please, Ms. Casey?
I will. Yes.
And, and go ahead, uh, Mr. Brown, if you would, um, please talk to, to the Board about, uh, about the project itself and, um, and, uh, the plan, please.
Okay, um, I think just to start out, to answer the question about what, what is existing now, basically, everything that shows on this plan under the proposed conditions is there other than the driveway. The, the building, the patio, the walkways, and the wall at the edge of the, the, uh, proposed parking area are all existing at this point. As you can see, the property, uh, has on it a 1,596 square foot duplex dwelling, uh, which are 66 and 68, uh, Wigan Street, um, along with, uh, the houses, or the porches, patios, driveways. Uh, vehicular access to the property is from the, from the rear. Uh, there's an alley or shared driveway, uh, that has access from Jefferson Road and Moore Street, and it, then it runs along the rear property lines of the lots fronting on Moore Street and Jefferson Road, uh, to the back of the slot. The, as I've said, the 20-foot by 40-foot block garage that was there was, was demolished in anticipation of construction of the currently proposed parking lot. As Mr. Bridger summarized in his report, uh, the existing conditions on the lot are non-compliant with a number of the bulk requirements of Land Use Ordinance, specifically the lot width, the smaller side yard, uh, come.
I just lost sound.
Yep. Yeah, we can't hear. Did we all lose sound?
I think so.
Yep. Yeah.
Duplex, which would mean there would be a three parking space requirement. And.
Jeffrey, can you hear us?
Yes.
You, uh, you might want to start over again for the record. We, you, we lost contact there for maybe a minute, 30, 40 seconds, so.
Okay. Any or none of it?
I started.
We just heard the very beginning and then it disappeared. So start again, probably be the best bet.
Okay, so the property is developed with a duplex dwelling, which is 66 and 68 Wigan Street, along with the pertinent, uh, uh, walkways and patios and, and porches. And it takes access from the shared driveway in the rear, uh, or, or alley, if you want to call it that, which runs, uh, which takes access off of both Jefferson Road and Moore Street and then runs, uh, along the rear yards of the, uh, the lots fronting on those two streets to the rear of this property. The, as I said before, the 20-foot by 40-foot, uh, block garage in the rear of the property was recently demolished in anticipation of constructing, uh, parking lot in this location. Uh, as Mr. Bridger's report summarizes, um, although the existing two-family dwelling is a conforming use in the zone, uh, the, the lot has a number of existing conditions that are not compliant with the ordinance, specifically, uh, the lot width, the smaller side yard, combined side yard, height to setback ratio, and impervious coverage. Uh, in order to meet the parking requirement, there is a parking requirement of one and a half spaces per unit. And the applicant is proposing to build a four-spaced, uh, permeable paver parking lot at the rear of the property, uh, in, in the location and a little bit beyond the location of the former garage. Uh, two new variants would, would be required, uh, for this construction. Firstly, maximum pervious coverage would be increased, uh, from the pre-existing of 50.2%, which included the former garage, to 62%, where a maximum of 49.5% is permitted. And the second variance would be, uh, the maximum driveway width at the property line, uh, where 14 feet is proposed and 10 feet is the maximum permitted by the ordinance. Uh, as to the 62% impervious coverage, you'll note from the plans that this includes 201 square feet or 2.7% uh, from an encroaching driveway from adjoining lot 53. And 1,600 square feet or 21.2% of that 62% impervious coverage is from the new, new permeable pavers. If you reduce the 62% by these two amounts, the impervious coverage would only amount to 38%. Uh, although the permeable pavers are counted as impervious cover under the ordinance, they're actually anything but impervious, uh, and will provide a benefit in reducing runoff from the pre-existing condition by infiltrating and storing runoff, which, which will be a benefit over the, uh, the previous garage, which obviously was totally impervious. Uh, the paver construction will include an eight-inch thick storage bed under the pavers and will provide more infiltration and create less runoff than an equivalent amount of lawn area. The 14-foot width of the driveway, although it exceeds the ordinance, uh, standard of 10 feet, uh, will match up with the easement in the rear, which is 15 feet wide at the property line, and also with the existing stone drive, which is approximately 17 feet wide at the property line. It will also make it a little easier to maneuver in that parking lot, which is, which is a little confined because there's, there are fences on all sides, sides of it. Um, the applicant is seeking C2 variance relief for both exceeding the maximum amount of impervious coverage and also exceeding the maximum width of the driveway at the property line. Um, the, uh, the garage that was, uh, previously demolished in anticipation of this, in anticipation of this project, being no longer available, the applicant, uh, does have to provide the three parking spaces. However, their actual need is, is for the four parking spaces that they're proposing. The, uh, the alternative to this on-lot parking lot is that the applicant and the owners would have to park on the street. Uh, there is limited parking, uh, on the opposite side of Wigan Street, and on-street parking is also permitted on Jefferson Road. But neither of these parking areas are really convenient to this property, and they're not typical of, uh, the parking arrangements for all of the other lots in this, in this area. Most of the properties along Wigan Street have on-lot parking spaces with driveway access from Wigan Street. Uh, as you can see here, though, uh, there is really no room on the sides of, of the building on this property to get a driveway in off of Wigan Street. Uh, most of the lots fronting on Jefferson Road and Moore Street to the rear of this property have driveway access and parking facilities located along the alley in the rear, uh, as previously described. Uh, the applicant's lot traditionally has also had access, uh, from the alley, which is a unique feature among the lots fronting on Wigan Street. I believe the parking lot arrangement proposed advances, uh, a couple of purposes of the municipal land use law, specifically Purpose A and G. Purpose A is to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the manner that will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Uh, and I believe that this plan does provide a parking, uh, area that provides a safe and convenient alternative to on-street parking. As to, uh, G of the land use, uh, law, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial uses. And I believe that this plan does provide a proposed parking lot in an appropriate location, uh, for residential use on this property. Uh, it's also my opinion that the proposed parking lot, in addition to incorporating the permeable pavers to mitigate any drainage impact, is well screened from the street and from adjacent properties and can be permitted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, in conclusion, I believe the benefits derived from the grant of the requested variance would substantially outweigh any detriment. The planned construction incorporates permeable pavers to reduce drainage impacts below what previously existed, thereby eliminating any potentially detrimental drainage impacts. Uh, and also we're, we're replacing that, the now demolished garage and is in keeping with existing development along the alley. It, it's also substantially screened from surrounding roadways and residences, mitigating, uh, any detrimental visual impacts. Uh, one, one change that's been made from the plan that you see is some of the fences have been changed. And this area is now completely enclosed by six-foot-high, uh, wooden, solid wooden fences. Uh, that's the extent of my testimony. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any Board members have any questions? Okay. I guess at this point, we should open it up to the public for, uh, comments. Claudia, are there any, uh, people waiting?
Yes, one second. Okay, I think I have everybody that, um, that's waiting.
I'm sorry. Say that again, please.
Everybody that was waiting to speak is on now.
Okay, so we, we have no one then?
No, sir. There are about four or five people.
Okay. Do we want to hear from them?
Yes.
Yes, we should. You want, do we give them access?
They do. They have access.
Okay. All right. Um, let's see. Well, I can't see anyone on my screen, so I would guess that let's have, um, the first person or a person come forward and identify themselves and, uh, be sworn in and, uh, ask her questions.
Okay, I could go first. My name is Joe.
I can't hear you, sir.
Yeah, we're losing the sound.
Okay, can you hear me now?
A little better.
Hmm, okay. My name is Joe Tatoni, owner of 11 Jefferson Road.
I, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're loo, we're, yeah, we're losing you, Mr. Tatoni. We can't hear. I'm sorry. Yeah, we're losing you, Mr. Tettone. We can't hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna call in. Hold on.
Okay.
Okay.
So while we're waiting, do you want to wait or do you want to go with another?
Let's take this person first.
Okay.
So yeah, let's do that. It'll only take a second, I believe.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me now any better?
Little bit. Let's try it.
Sorry about that. Okay, again, my name is Joseph.
Now, it's a very, it's a
We're losing you again.
It's a very poor connection.
Okay.
How about now? Is that any better?
Oh, a lot better.
Yep.
All right. Very good. Sorry about that. My apologies for making you wait.
Quite all right.
Do I need to be sworn in?
You do, Mr. Tettone. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it is.
And could you repeat what your address is? I think that kind of faded away.
11 Jefferson Road. My wife Julie and I submitted you a letter explaining our reason for not being in support of this application. Very simple. There's sort of three simple reasons. But I do want to clarify one thing, given the testimony previously. There's been conversation about pre-existing compacted gravel on that site. That's not completely truthful. The compacted gravel was brought by the applicant back in the fall. There was some there that was there as a parking spot, but mostly it was grass, and now it is compacted gravel. So I just want to clarify that. The three reasons that I enumerated in our letter to you, stormwater runoff and why that can be controlled by pervious pavers, pavers are not pervious. It's what's beneath it, and it has everything to do with the gravel bed and the capacity to hold the water between the stones. I don't know if anybody did a stormwater calculation to determine that if eight inches of gravel would be appropriate or not. All I know is, living here 27 years, there's a lot of water back there. Okay, so just be aware of that. In order to make the gravel bed work, you have to cut into the surface. And that brings up our second point, which is there's a 100-year-old pine tree on the property line. And it probably will have detrimental effect to the growth of that tree and its root structure. So just be aware of that. We're nervous and concerned about that. And that's really the main issues that I think we have with this application. We'd like to find another way to allow them to park their cars on their property because they should be able to do that. We just feel paving the entire backyard is going to hurt that tree and is going to cause more water issues in the back. And that's our thoughts on that.
Okay. Let me, Mr. Brown, do you have the tree located on any of your plans?
It is not located on it.
Where does it sit?
If you look on the plan where it says masonry garage on the left-hand side, and this is the dimension of 105 feet, by that number one is where the tree is located. It's six feet from the corner of the garage on the fence line.
Six feet from the corner of the garage on the fence line.
Yeah, so looking at the plan, there's a masonry garage on Lot 49. That's 11 Jefferson Road.
Yes, I see it.
And if you see the dimension of 150 feet, which is
I do.
Right by the number one of 150 is where the center line of the 40-inch pine is located.
Okay, on the fence line.
Yes.
So looking at your proposed plan, the, pretty much, the that tree is going to be very close to the paved area there. The trunk of the tree, probably, right?
It's three feet away from the paved area, yes.
It's three feet away from the paved area.
The trunk of the tree is three feet away.
Elevation-wise, how is the elevation of the base of that tree as to the, relative to the base of the proposed drive area or parking area?
It's sloping toward 66, 68, the yard slope in the back. So it's a little higher than the, I don't know what the actual elevation mark is, but it is a little higher, the base of the tree, than the back of 66, 68.
The parking lot is higher than the base of the tree?
No. No, 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 no. The base of the tree is higher.
The base is higher.
There's actually a wall along that, the edge of where the proposed driveway is, that's already been constructed.
The wall was constructed recently. And the, right, and, and you know, that's not represented on the plans, but it was constructed recently and the earth has been pushed up against the fence.
Okay, so is this, so this, the root structure of the tree may already have been compromised.
Well, putting in that wall, maybe they had to cut through the roots to do it.
Now, wait, who?
I don't know that.
Whose wall was that?
66, 68.
Okay. So that's, your wall was put in on that line. Okay. And, all right. Okay, that's my only question.
Just a point of clarification. This is Julie Tettone, Joe's wife. We happen not to be in the same building tonight, but
Mrs. Tettone, I hate to interrupt you. I'll just swear you in quickly. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, when you say "your" wall, it's not 11 Jefferson's wall. My husband was speaking. It's not
I don't know. No, it's 66 to 68. Yeah.
That's all. Just wanted to point a clarification.
Okay, no problem.
My dad, Mr. Cohen, I reached out and spoke with Mr. Tettone yesterday about his concerns. And what we're committed to in terms of the tree, right? He has an arborist that he retained that gave him an opinion. We have two. Those two arborists know each other because I, you know, have done business together in the past and are familiar with each other. So one thing that we can commit to is is retaining, if he likes, his arborist or ours, whichever it is, when the pavers do go in, to have a hands-on approach from them to ensure that the roots are protected as best as they possibly can. And my clients are absolutely fine with that 100%. They don't, you know, they have no interest in having the tree die and they don't want to get into that calamity. So we're happy to have that cooperation with them.
Okay. What was the response of the, our applicant here? Actually, we should probably hear from our applicant on this. And how do you feel about having an arborist make recommendations?
I just want to clarify one point, too. There was not grass where the gravel was. I have pictures. When we moved in, that entire area was gravel. The grass area is still the grass area minus the patios. There was extra gravel brought in when they were building the patio to put underneath, but that's not, it had nothing to do with the parking area. So I just wanted to clarify that. Listen, I said to Bob, I'll say to my neighbors, they all know. I've actually never met the Tettones, but all my other neighbors that are on here know that we're just looking to make a parking area that maintains the integrity of the neighborhood of the trees to mitigate the water. We're happy to use an arborist. We don't want any damage. We want to work with everyone that's around us. And so, you know, we reached out. We actually had a tree guy come earlier, looking at the yard. We had a tree guy come yesterday to see what we could do, the potential options, to make sure. Went back to our engineer to get his ideas. So we're totally on board for that. We just want to do this well, and we want to do it respectfully with our neighbors in order to get parking that's better than what we have now because what we have now is the impact of gravel. We know that's not, it's not our best solution.
I guess the question is, are the Tettones on board? Are you in agreement with the applicant on this?
I think we're in agreement that we also want to have an amicable way for them to park their cars back there. I'm not in agreement that putting pavers on top of that 100-year-old tree, no matter how it's done, isn't going to hurt it. I mean, that's my opinion. It's more than an opinion. I really do know what some of this stuff. To make a permeable paver situation around that tree, we're going to have to dig into its roots and then hope that it will survive. And that part of it, I'm not in agreement with, to be honest. The rest of the yard is fine.
Okay, I can appreciate that. All right, are there any other? Are you, do you have any other questions or that we can, the applicant can address?
Are you taking other comments from other people or are you still on?
Yes, let's go on to, if this neighbor is done with his questions, we can go on to the next person.
Okay, so I'm Rebecca Maynard, and I live at 86 Moore. And I'd like to speak in favor of this application.
Maynard, we just need to interrupt. Did you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. So my lot is contiguous to the majority of the applicant's real lot. And I'm speaking in support of the improvements as proposed in the variance request. Susan and Zee have done a lot of nice things to their yard, and I think that what they propose is another improvement. And I say this with some experience, knowing what the water concerns are in that backyard. Our yard sits on the high water table bordering this entire, what would be the parking spaces. We've used landscaping features.
Are you in Lot 54 on Moore Street?
We're at 86 Moore. I'm not sure of the lot number. Yes, yes, that is it.
Okay, go ahead. Continue. I'm sorry.
Okay. So we've used landscaping features in our own yard and containment systems to mitigate water problems. You know, there are still concerns, but we think we got great advice. And we believe that the improvements that we put in place also service other neighbors and the water concerns that they have. These applicants have been very sympathetic to our concerns. We've talked through them with, they've consulted with the people who did our yard. They've indicated to us that as part of this parking area refurbishment, they plan to remove the current compacted material, as you saw in the plan, and regrade to bring down the slope of the yard before adding the pavers. They've also suggested that they would be open to additional water containment measures, should they be necessary. So we installed a pipe out to the main water system, which was recommended to us by the township and by our contractors. And that seems to have worked well for our yard. We did a lot of regrading. So my feeling is, and the advice that we've gotten from the people we worked with when we did our construction, is that replacing the current sloped, impervious surface with the yard consisting of properly pitched and installed permeable pavers could actually lessen the runoff from what it is now. And we do get runoff now. It does seem to be reasonably well-contained. So for these reasons, my husband and I are supportive of what Susan and Zee are trying to do to improve that property. And we have worked with them enough to feel pretty confident that they will work with us and professionals and the neighbors to come up with a solution that works for all of us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Claudia, can we bring in the next person?
Yes. Can I speak? My name is Kate.
Yes, yes, we hear you. Karen, would you like to swear this witness in?
I would. Ma'am, could you give us your full name? We can't hear you very well.
Sure. It's Catherine Warren, 17 Jefferson.
And Ms. Warren, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So what I would like to say is, the Warren family owned 70 Wigan Street, 66, 68, 17, 19, 21, 23, 25, and 27. We all were on the fire lane. I think it's important to know that behind 66 and 68, before it was sold off by the Warren estate, had four one-car garages behind 66 and 68. There was also another garage that was adjacent to the lot of 86 Moore Street. And I think that you're all talking about that garage there because the four garages did allow for two tenants in each of 66, 68 to park, except for the one furthest to the Tettones' property was a half, you could only get in halfway because of a property line with my tenant at, I mean, our neighbors at 15 Jefferson Road, which are next to the Tettones'. So what was parked there was a motorcycle and some bikes. But there was four one-car garages on that property. I can also state that I think the new owners have done an amazing job. There was a lot of runoff until they created those patios that you're talking about, cut off a lot of water. It's sort of a tiered system back there. So there's a lot less water, a lot less runoff coming down the fire lane. And so I think that everybody back here is really pleased with not only what Zee and Susan have done, but also Stu and Rebecca that just spoke. The water situation here is much different. And the water runoff, the major problem was the catch basin at the intersection of the fire lane between Moore. It went from Jeff, it goes from Jefferson to Moore, and then it backs up into that 66, 68 parking lot and goes to what's the street right here? Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. Hawthorne. So that, it was the basin there, it was the municipal basin that wasn't able to catch the water. There's a lot much, a lot less water runoff. And I think that I'm in full support of what they would like to do. They've done an amazing job of improving what the back fire lane looks like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Claudia, do we have another person who would like to speak?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. All right. If there are no more people out there, then we'll close the public portion. Would the applicant like to make a closing statement before we go into executive session?
I'll submit it this time. Thank you very much, board.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go into executive session. And do any of the board members have any comments on this application?
Well, I, I have one comment, Steve.
Sure.
I'm kind of, I'm stuck on the impervious cover and the impervious, uh, cover they want to use that's pervious, but it's, it doesn't qualify under the code, so.
Right, right. I, I, I agree with you, Michael. Um, the, it would seem to me that, just given the amount of paving out there and the, and the most probably compacted base below this, that it's really, is not going to be, the, the, the use of permeable paving is really not going to be that significant.
Okay, I, I just, you know, I have trouble with the next application that says, I'm putting down impervious pavers, so don't, don't count it under the code, but I always have trouble with those types of things.
Well, no, I don't disagree with you. When you have a, when you have a heavily compacted base and you put gravel over it, doesn't mean you're going to drain through it, right? Um, and it would require a significant excavation to get it to work. Um, okay, do, um, Mr. Brown, do you have any comments on that?
Um, yeah, I, I, I think the pervious pavers will work. The pervious, the pervious pavers are to be constructed over a bed of eight-inch clean, eight inches of clean stone. And while I haven't really done a drainage calculation, that would, uh, capture roughly three inches of rainfall, which would be, for example, the peak hour of a 100-year storm or something on the order of maybe a, a two-to-five-year storm. So, um, and, and as far as being compacted, the gravel that's down there right now is pretty well-compacted since it's been driven on, um, but we could add a specification that, that the subgrade could be tilled before they start placing the stone to loosen up the subgrade. Um, as to the roots on the tree, um, I think if they excavate it carefully and maybe under supervision from, uh, either the, uh, applicants or, uh, the joiners, uh, arborist, uh, they should be able to excavate it and not damage the roots, even if they had to reduce the depth of the stone bed in a few places to accommodate some of the tree roots. Um, that, that wouldn't be a problem. So I, I do think that the, the permeable, permeable pavers overall would be a benefit here because they will trap quite a bit of water. And everything from Wigan Street slips to the north and ends up going down that, that common driveway alley in the back. So the more you can reduce the runoff at the upper end, the, the bigger the benefit's going to be downstream to the residents along the alley.
Where is, from the eight inches of gravel you're proposing, where is that water going to go?
Um, it's going to infiltrate into the ground eventually, but it may take a while. I mean, we haven't done any soil tests, so I, I don't specifically know how long it may take, but you don't really get a three-inch rainfall that often either. So most rainfalls, you know, of an inch or less are going to be accommodated very easily and will have a lot of time to drain out before the next storm comes. So, um, you know, there, if you get a really big storm, you will probably get some runoff. In the smaller, normal storms, I doubt there'll be any runoff at all coming out of there.
All right, thank you. Are there any, any other comments from the, from any of the board members?
Um, it bothers me that something that is important in our discussion, that, that tree, wasn't, um, wasn't put on the plan. I don't know whether that's required or not. If only what we're required to be shown is what construction is going to happen. Um, but we wouldn't have known about it if, uh, the neighbor hadn't brought it up. And I also, I just kind of feel like I'm shooting in the dark right now. I have, I, I did notice when I visited that I couldn't figure out how the heck the cars were going to get there, although I, I did see that there was an alley, so I wondered if that was the way, but I didn't, it wasn't clear to me.
Way.
Maybe I missed something, but, um, in the descriptions, but I also, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, the proposed patios that are actually there, if, if they weren't there, would that make, make a difference? I, I just, it's just hard for me to, it's harder for me in this case to see exactly what's going on because I wasn't really able to see it. I do think that there could be, so I'm kind of all over the place right now, but I do think that, um, having some cars off the street is a good thing. So having four cars that are not parked on the street is, is a good thing. And I'm certain that the people, that the owners feel the same way, that, you know, I, I understand that part of it. So I'm, I'm just processing right now. Those are my thoughts.
I have a question. I have a question of Derek. The, the, would the, would the owners of 66 to 68 be able to get a permit to park on the street since there was parking there before? And even though it was a garage that was a little compromised?
Garage was removed before the other house-
Excuse me, gentlemen, just, um, he, the neighbor that was on the phone, he's not muted and he's, um, carbling the-
Okay.
Meeting. So if, Mr. Tettoni, if you can mute your phone? Thanks, all right.
Right.
So, so basically, would the, would the owners of 66, 68 be allowed to park on the street? Could they get permits to park on the street since, in theory, they have a driveway and a parking area?
They do not have an approved driveway and parking area.
So what does that mean? Does that mean they could get permits to park on the street?
If you turn this down, they could, or they could apply it to a smaller-
I'm sorry, if they did what?
If, if this is turned down, then they don't have parking on this, on the site, even though it's gravel now, I mean, um, in the back there.
I guess, I guess what I was getting to is there was a garage there that was taken out, and so there was, uh, there was approved parking on the site, which was removed. I'm just, I'm, what I'm trying, what I'm getting to really is, is, um, would, if, if by chance, the board chooses not to approve this, um, are the owners eligible to get a permit to park on the street? Considering they had parking there at one time that was removed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments from any board members?
Yeah, I have a question. Go ahead.
Well, my question is, is there any estimate as to the length of the tree's life at this point?
No, I could, I, this is Bob Casey. I, I, Mr. Tettoni stated that he thought it was 100 years old. Um, and, um, the, the arborist, the two arborists that looked at it did not put a, a life expectancy on it from the two documents that I saw.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, I have a question for the engineer. The, I, I'm trying to picture the, the turning radius for these four vehicles. Do you need that full area, um, on the plan where it says proposed parking? That, that full depth for the turnaround? Um, I can see, you know, the four vehicles pull in and they're, they're in that area for four vehicles. But, um, when you did the turning radius, is that full area that says, uh, proposed parking needed for the turnaround?
Uh, yes, um, the, the four vehicles would park up against the wall where it says area for four vehicles.
Right.
And actually, the, the aisle behind it is a little bit shorter than you would normally like to have for a parking lot. Uh, you might have to make two turns because you're limited to that, that opening also to get out. So it would be very, it, it's a little short right now, so it would be even more difficult the more you would shorten.
What is the width of that area? I, I can't see the dimension. What's the width of the, the area that's noted as area for four vehicles?
It's 40 feet, right?
46.
How, what is that again?
The, the area for four vehicles is, it's 18 feet deep and, and roughly 40 feet wide. So you could probably cut maybe a couple of feet off of that and make nine-foot spaces instead of 10-foot spaces.
Right.
Have a little less paved area. And then the, the turnaround would be narrowed also then, right? I mean, in theory, the turnaround only needs to be as, as wide as the, as the four parking spaces.
Right, you'd like to have a foot or so to make, just turn a little bit as you come out, but-
It's a, it's a tight, it's tight to turn around in there. It's, it's very tight to turn around in there.
Yeah, and you could maybe bias it towards, you know, away from the tree. Take the four feet away, reduce it to 36, and move it away from the tree.
Yeah. Move it to the east.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that would-
Yes, we, we could do that.
Yeah, that would pull it away. Okay. All right, that sounds like a reasonable solution. All right, are there any other, uh, comments from any of the board members? Does somebody want to make a motion? Anyone?
Um, I, I would motion to approve it with, um, a reduced parking area to nine, nine by 18 for each, each vehicle, and then i- if, if the turnaround can also be the, the, the same proportional dimension.
Okay, and what about moving it further to, moving the whole-
Right, yeah, bias it towards the east.
Sure, okay. Any, uh, anyone have, uh, anybody want to second that motion?
Anyone good at numbers that can tell me how much that reduces it?
Reduces what, Michael?
Basically, the impervious coverage, what we're talking about.
Well, I guess, what is it? The parking spaces are 18 and the turnaround's 18, and then we're, we're going to reduce it four feet, so it's what, 72 square feet?
Okay.
Is that right, Mr. Brown?
Well, 72 for the parking spaces, and then if we also shrink the aisle behind it by the same amount, it would be another similar amount, so probably somewhere around 150 square feet.
Yeah.
Which, which takes you down to what percentage of impervious? I know it's an improvement, I'm just asking for the record.
Um, I, I don't have a calculator handy, so I'm, I'm not sure I can answer that.
Okay.
It's better.
It's fairly, it's a fairly small amount, I can tell you that.
I just want to see on the application if it has, uh, the square footage of the impervious coverage.
Well, if it's, assuming that it's somewhere around the 72 square feet, that's 1%. It's a 7,500-square-foot lot, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the application said, uh, 4,006.50.
Right, so if, if you take 150 off, it brings it down to like 60% impervious.
Not, not a lot.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay, but it brings it down, so that's good.
Yeah, as a proportion of the driveway, and, yeah.
And a little bit more room for the tree.
A little bit more room for the tree, exactly. Okay, um, so we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. Now, do we, do we want to, uh, do we want to put anything in there about the arborist? The arborist for the adjacent property talking with the applicant, at least trying to work something out? I mean, not, we're not going to condition it on them coming to an agreement, but do we want to put anything in there that they, they're supposed to cooperate with one another to see if they can find a, an amicable solution beyond what we're doing now?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll do that.
So we should add some wording in that, in the approval? Is that something, Karen, that you could insert?
I, I think so. I mean, basically, you want the applicant to try and work in good faith with the neighbor and, uh, uh, have their arborist try to cooperate to see what can be done to save the tree, but you're not obligating the applicant then to implement that, right?
Exactly. We don't, we don't know what it is, and, uh, you know, again, this is beyond us moving, moving the paved area over, which is going to lessen the impact on the tree now.
Yeah, that's fine. Karen, I can work on language with you if you like as well, of whatever, to cooperate and use best efforts to preserve the root base of the tree, um, something along those lines.
Okay.
Okay, um, does everybody understand the, do the board members understand what we're? Do you have any questions on the, uh, on the, um, resolution?
I think Derek is going to speak.
I would just like to hear the, how the area's going to be reduced so that we can figure out when a plan comes in, whether it complies or not.
Okay. As I understand it, um, we're going to reduce the width of the, of both the, the parking area and the area in front of it, the turnaround area, by four feet. And we're going to shift the, both, both the parking area and the turnaround area to the east.
For the four-feet reduction, will that come off of the west side?
Well, I think, I think to have the impact we're talking about, it would need to come off of the west side, yeah.
Then I think that needs to be clarified if we, because it's hard to figure out, you know?
Well, again, and then if we're talking about, so the bias, then, uh, the offset will be, um, from the west. So I, I guess, basically, there's a five-foot setback there now. It would be nine feet?
Mm-hmm.
And then the, the area where it flares out where the proposed, where, where the turnaround areas would go from three feet to seven feet?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Are, are you comfortable with that, Derek?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good, you're welcome. Okay, um, if anybody has any other comments, please mention them. If not, uh, Claudia, can you call, call a roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Thelma?
Yes.
Mr. Valdez?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Have a good night.
You're welcome. So, so, board members, I guess, we're done. Is there anything else, Karen, that we need to discuss?
No, no, we're done.
Okay, all right, thank you all, and, and we'll see you next month.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Good luck, Stacey.